Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our
Good evening. Welcome, everyone, to the regular meeting of the Lower Gwinnett Board of Supervisors for Tuesday, May 9th, 2023. The Board of Supervisors did meet an executive session prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel and litigation. A couple of announcements and presentations. The Lower Gwinnett Police Department was reaccredited, but we are going to table recognizing our program so that we can ensure that all of the police department are available to be with us. So we'll do that at our May 23rd meeting. There will be a ceremony to raise the pride flag at Veterans Park on June 1st, 2023 at 6:00 p.m. All are welcome. In addition, all are welcome to come to the community picnic celebrating Juneteenth at Bethlehem Baptist Church on Saturday, June 17th, from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m., and that will be held in partnership with Ambler Borough as well as Bethlehem Baptist Church. Next, I want to open the floor to comments from any citizens around questions or concerns on items not on the agenda.
So I'm here. I have to leave. I just want to point out, since we last talked, that the Penland School is actually 100 years old this year, 2023. And the foundation of Bethlehem Baptist Church in Penland, which was the original place where the second iteration of the church was built, is it 120 years this year? I was just thinking, Danielle, that it's been over two years that I've come to this board to ask them to consider putting signage in Penland. I've sat in the Historical Commission meetings, and I just think, and I said that to them, and maybe you can look at the video from the last time I went. It's a no-brainer to honor Penland and Penland's school this year. The processes that they have approved to get other historical landmarks makes a lot of sense to me. But it doesn't make sense to me that we're not doing something to honor this community. I've repeated over and over again that this is a gentrified community, and I'm very, very concerned that, well, I know for a fact that that community will not be predominantly Black in the next 10 to 20 years. And the more and more time I spend with people from Penland and the elders in Penland and on the heels of our Black Hall of Fame ceremony last week, I just keep thinking about all of the people that built that community and established that community and gave us a well-rounded education. So I just came back because I know the historical markers thing is on the agenda. I just think that this particular request with Penland should not be necessarily through the tracking because it's been over two years. It's a no-brainer. I'm going to leave. I want to listen to see what happens later, but I mean, I can't keep remembering to keep going to these meetings with the same type of... Is there a timeline? Because I didn't know if you were telling me to...
No, there was something on the microphone.
So I'm just really trying to really ask you guys to just put a vote to at least mark or honor where the Penland School is, where the foundation of that church was built, even welcome to Penland Village. Because there are going, I don't want to bring a boatload of people in this meeting, another meeting, to say, this is what we want. It's just the right thing to do. And it's just, you know, going through the semantics, going through the whole whatever, it's a no-brainer. Even as leaders of this township, you have to acknowledge that that was the only community in this township that was predominantly of color. That alone quantifies and qualifies for it to be pushed up because this is the 100th year of the school and the 123rd, 20th year of the church. I will email you guys the picture of the Penland School, just to show you the magnitude of what it was at that time. And I also found out since we left that the Black students were only forced to go to Spring House in 1953 because the building was not feasible for them to be educated in. But just think if it was, they would have still probably been in there. So again, that's another reason for me to say to all of you that it just seems like it's just a good thing to do, to just do some simple acknowledgement. Because Mr. Moore is not, his whole, his sisters, and then they're in their 90s. Their mother built that church for that community, period. And just to be respectful of honoring the people that still live there, that we could just say, this is where it stood. Because people that are coming into that community have no idea of all the awesome things that happened in that community, all the lives that it touched. And I personally think that if you guys honor that, that will legitimize you guys being broad-minded about everything. And it will give such a nice feeling about the significance of that community and the people that built that community. And just another point about the foundation of the church was so significant about that. And I used to speak about the history of Penland at the country picnics when it was up in Penland. I always had a table there. I don't know if you remember, but I was always there. The thing that is so distinguishing about the foundation of that church, the facade that's right there, that was built by domestic workers that lived in that community, that is, should be shared. That's why we hang on to that church. And anyone can go on my Facebook page, Carmina Taylor, and you can look at the video of the Black Hall of Fame last week, and you can listen to everyone that was there that talked about what Penland meant to them. So it's not just me, but I'm always the one coming up here to speak, and I don't really mind. But I do think it doesn't need to go through the process that whatever you should be discussing. I don't see anybody. Okay. Is anybody from the Historical Commission going to be here?
No, but I wanted to speak to it just because it is on our agenda, but there's some, I think there's some information I wanted to share, but only when you're done.
With me? Or like now because I have to leave?
Yeah, really quick. That's what I was gonna say. No, I first just...
I just think that my comments speak for themselves. You guys all know me, you know why I'm here. That's it. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Okay. So I just wanted to thank you for coming. I think this is kind of the sentiment that I've shared with a couple of people throughout this past week. Reverend Kwan, who is the current pastor at Bethlehem Baptist Church, has been in communication with me, I think, since maybe last year around the anniversary. It's 135th anniversary.
The actual church, but...
That structure, yes. So we've been talking about how to honor that, and he has asked the Historical Committee and the Board as a whole to consider a marker at the actual origination, like the church site. Again, that was his request, and he will be...
Because he gets requested and gets pushed up?
No, that's why I'm trying to answer you. So he asked that, I think, a year ago, but that wasn't what his original request was. He was talking about something that we have no precedent for doing in Lower Gwinnett.
Which I know all about.
Good, okay. So that is one thing. We also have talked to the Historic Committee about Folk Mansion, which was another historic property that's actually on the National Registry, is honoring that. In addition to the school, and I think the school was put up on our website just this past April. Yeah, recognizing the 100th anniversary of it. So in the Historical Committee, they made recommendations to the process and the procedure, and they make that recommendation to the staff, and it has to come before the Board. Before the Board can consider it, we kind of need to work out, like, the logistics of costs associated, how it would be done, the process, so that it can be fair and equitable. Because I do believe in equity as it relates to processes and procedures, so that everybody gets treated the same. Understanding that those three things, I think, and part of it was because of your recommendation, but those three things we all knew were top of mind and the things that we wanted to address first. So I think that when we get to it, we're going to have, I guess, a vote and a discussion around tabling the items so that we have all of the information. And one of our Board members is absent, and he definitely wanted to be a part of that conversation. That doesn't dissuade us from moving forward and understanding that we fully plan to move forward with a market program, how that's going to look, what, how that's going to work out, what the signs will look like, the cost association. We need to kind of take all of that into consideration. It's part of being good steward to the taxpayer dollars, but also understanding that there's a possibility that we might want to recognize the entire village of Penland for the reasons that you explained. So there's multiple things that we were kind of weighing at the same time, and those came as recommendations from the Historic Committee that the Board has to consider as a whole. So I appreciate you coming again because I have been advocating very strongly within the past few weeks that we needed to move forward, and we needed to get some kind of decision about how we're going to move forward done soon as possible.
So I remember speaking at...
But what, just one second, before you continue, can you just for, just for our note taker, could you please say your name and where you live so that she can, it can be on the record?
Carmina Taylor, former resident of Penland Village.
Thank you.
So if you can go back, you can't do it now, but the Historical Commission members were in agreement that the specific honoring of Penland this year, I mean, having it on the website is one thing, but having a community event is another. And I didn't, I wasn't aware that you put it on your website, but that still doesn't seem like enough to me. So what I'm listening is that you're still going to come in Penland and the signage in Penland with the processes that they're going, you're going to approve of tonight. So you're putting it back in, or you're gonna...
No, I said the policy and procedure can't be made by one Board member, two Board members. We need the entire Board to weigh in. We don't operate in silos. And one member of our Board is not present, and he specifically asked to be a part of that conversation. So while it's on the agenda tonight, because when the agenda was set, we were on the understanding that everybody was going to be present, it, we're going to take a vote to see if we can table it. But the point of that is, we are still moving forward with the program, and the program is addressing primarily Penland, but also moving forward how anyone who wants to honor historical site within Lower Gwinnett could do so, so that it's an equitable process. So we're not necessarily singling out one marker or one place over another that everyone can submit, and how they would submit and how it would be reviewed. And that's part of the process we're being, we're reviewing.
So there's five Board Supervisors, correct?
Correct.
And there's four here tonight?
Correct.
And you will potentially table a conversation that's been ongoing for years, but one person's not here?
No, I'm not tabling it for years. I'm tabling it for two weeks because this Board member specifically contacted me and said, I want to be a part of this discussion. But he didn't just contact me, he also contacted staff.
I just hope that you guys really strongly consider having something in the community this year before it gets cold to honor where that place is and the church. That's just my two cents.
No, I appreciate that. And you don't have to come in person, Carmina. You can be on Zoom.
Because you know what? I recognize being in person is so much more beneficial to me, so I can see all the optics. I just want to point out that I didn't tell anybody that I was coming to this meeting, and so far Ms. Gloria and Carol are not here, so I see a pattern. Danielle, here's the thing, right? I respect bravely in your position that you're in because you are the chair of this board. But I think, you know, and I will say this personally, that you being a woman of color from this community, from this township, having grown up here, having raised kids here, just knowing the significance of what it means to be a person of color in Lower Gwinnett to live here and be amongst everybody else. To me, that's a distinctive quality and a different type of responsibility. I don't want any problems with you, but you know where I stand. And I am going to fiercely continue to advocate for this. This should not take another year, and I'm just recommending that it should be somewhere where the community and people all over Lower Gwinnett and the neighbors in Penland see that that is where that is placed. It's just really, really important, and I think it will set a different tone of respect for the space in that town. Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it. Any other public comments? Seeing none, we can move on to Resolution 202311, the Preliminary and Final Land Development Approval for Gwinnett Mercy Academy. I do believe their attorney is here.
And I will be brief. We were here a month ago at your, at your meeting, went through the review letters, went through the project. We had a robust conversation. We walked away with two items. One, can we provide an easement along the road frontages, which we can. That's been incorporated in the resolution. We were able to provide a 15-foot-wide easement along both frontages. That's attached in part of the resolution. That's before you this evening. We were also able to add five trees along Evans Road near, some near the driveway and some further down by the ball field. So we were able to accomplish those two things. All the other terms and conditions in the resolution are of no surprise. It was all that we discussed last time. My client has signed it. We've accepted the terms, and we ask that you vote on it.
Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the public?
For addressing our consent.
Thank you. It's my pleasure, and thanks for the extra time to get it done. We appreciate it.
So we had in our Board Packet, the conditional use memo from our staff. Staff made the recommendation for us to move forward with the preliminary final approval of the Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School Land Development, number 2207 LD, with the conditions noted above in the approval resolution. I'm not going to read the entire resolution. It is included. I would make a motion for us to approve preliminary and final land development for Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School as their second. A second. All those in favor?
And I also want to note, before we take our vote, just in the interest of transparency, I sit on the Board of Gwinnett Mercy Academy High School. There is no financial interest here, so there's no conflict of interest. I just want to be transparent about that. But inversely, when we voted at the Board level at Gwinnett to grant the easement, I did abstain from that vote. So the second's here. You have your second?
All those in favor?
I...
Post?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next up is the authorization, authorization to advertise an amendment to our SADO to increase the traffic impact fee. I'm going to turn it over to our traffic engineer.
Good evening. At the last Board meeting, we gave an update on our progress with the update to the Township's transportation impact fee and our work with the Advisory Committee appointed by the Board and with the recommendation to increase the fee to $3,865 per afternoon peak hour trip. The Solicitor has prepared a draft ordinance amendment to advertise if authorized by the Board this evening.
Any questions from the Board? Any questions from the public? Being none, I'm trying to see if we have a resolution number. No, it's just to advertise, correct? Okay, so what we have before us is authorization to advertise an amendment to the SADO to increase our traffic impact fee. I will make that motion. Is there a second? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you so much. Next up, we have a review of our Township's engineering report.
So in the interest of keeping everyone informed on projects that have been going on, Mimi asked that we prepare a monthly engineering report. That report is before you, so I'm here to answer any questions anyone may have.
Any questions from the Board?
You got a good work.
Thank you.
This report is up online in the, it's in the packet online, so that the public can see all of the work that you have been doing. Any questions? No? Any questions from anyone online? Good job.
All right.
Next up, we have a review of our traffic engineer report.
So likewise, we prepared a monthly status report for you for the significant transportation projects that we have been working on and also included current status for the PennDOT 202 project and the McKean Road pedestrian improvements being completed by Beacon. Take any questions? If anybody has?
Question from the Board? Do you feel that you have a good rapport and Beacon is responsive and with you and the Township's concerns?
Yeah, definitely. The project has been moving along well. There was an issue, a couple issues, minor, that came up during the last few days that required some field changes to some work that had been completed. And when we requested those, their engineer is very responsive and coming up with some revised plans for us to review and approve.
Right. Because this is really the first time that Lower Gwinnett Township has dealt with a, you know, an out-of-town major landowner and developer. So hopefully, it will proceed just as smoothly as it has in the past with local guys.
Anyone else?
I have a question on this Spring House intersection, because I know we're going to get started soon.
Sure.
Have the business owners and residents, I know that a letter was sent out, do they know about when it's starting and how it's going to impact sort of the traffic flow into their, either home or business?
Yeah, we actually have a meeting scheduled tomorrow morning here at the Township Building where the business owners around the intersection were invited, where we can give them a update on the project scope and how the schedule will proceed and answer any questions that they might have. Yep.
What time is that meeting?
10:30.
I don't think I can appreciate what it's going to look like, but do you think that the homeowners that are going to be impacted just, you know, leaving for work, coming home? Have they, has it been articulated in the letter in a way where people can appreciate the amount of impact?
Yeah, I mean, you know, there was some information about, you know, that there could be some, you know, temporary disruptions in traffic. You know, the contract has been structured in a way to try and minimize that as much as possible, in particular with the restriction on paving from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. only, so they're not out there during rush hour in the morning or the, in the evening, causing disruption.
Okay. Any additional questions? Any from anyone online? Thank you. Good job. Oh, if you could, if you could just come up and say your name and address?
Chastity Bruno. I live on 930 Redstone Lane. In regard to the letter that was sent out, I don't recall receiving it. So how, like, did it go to everyone in the township or only within a certain radius?
I'm pretty sure we used what we would use for zoning hearing board. I think we went a little further than that, which is like 1,000 feet.
So would that then...
It's basically encompassed like all of Spring House Farm, that whole development, and then like up Bethlehem Pike, both directions, and Sumney Town Pike and Norris Town Road. So Redstone, you wouldn't have gotten it.
I'm on Redstone.
Yeah.
Cedar Hill Road.
Yeah.
So then I guess my next question, if it encompasses that, did it go to the schools because...
Yeah, they're invited to the meeting along with all, like, emergency personnel, that type of thing. They'll all be there tomorrow to go over it.
Are the community members also permitted to come to that meeting tomorrow? Is it just for the businesses as well?
It was just for the businesses, but we said that they could offer, they could extend the invitation to whoever they wanted to. So we're not excluding. Like, we wouldn't say, no, you can't come in, or you can't attend the meeting. You could certainly attend.
Okay. I don't know if I could put a request in to have that letter sent to additional residents. I mean, I live two seconds from here. So definitely, all of those neighborhoods off of Cedar Hill Road and in the surrounding area are going to be affected by those traffic patterns in terms of getting to and from work and getting their kids to and from school. So it might be helpful if everyone in a little bit broader area understood what is going to be happening and how it's going to impact, because it's definitely going to affect those people who are trying to get their kids to school on time.
Right. We did send out email blast about it, and we do, we set up a separate page on the website called, we are calling it Construction Corner, and that has project, the whole project summary, along with a PowerPoint presentation and the actual plan. And then we'll be updating that periodically throughout the course of the project to keep people up to speed on what's going on. And we use the email alert system, so, and we've had it in like the e-newsletter and our regular newsletter, so. So, but any update, any type of, you know, if there's something comes up and there's a closure or whatnot, that will be blasted out.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next up, we have a review. We have a memo from our recreational director around waiving fees for Penland Park rental on June 10th. Memo was included in our manager's report. It goes over the annual celebration of the flowers still grow and the request to waive permits related to that actual event. Are there any questions? And I think the fee would total $130. All the necessary applications were completed, and we'll be providing certificate of insurance. Are there any questions from the Board?
The rationale for the waiver is that this is part of Lower Gwinnett Township's contribution to the event, along with Whitpey and Ambler?
Yes. Yes. I think historically, the other municipalities, surrounding municipalities have made some sort of donation.
Make that clear.
Are there any questions from anybody online? I'm sorry, go ahead. Oh, is it not?
So I don't know, I don't think they do make a dollar contribution. Whitpey definitely does not. It's like the Police Benevolent Association, private nonprofit organization makes a contribution, but they don't, but they don't, they're not making dollar contributions. Our, in addition to waiving the fees, the Police Community Response Unit is using their funds to get Kona Ice Truck for a couple hours, so as an in-kind donation as well.
Similar to this, we're not giving a check, but we're waiving a fee. Are there any questions from anybody online or in the public? No? Forward a motion for us to approve the fee waiver for the Penland Park rental on June 10th for the Flowers Still Grow celebration. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
John Carries, thank you. Next up is a topic we kind of discussed briefly with our first comment, but the Historical Advisory Committee has made recommendations. It was included in our manager's report. One of our Board members, Mike Torski, is unable to be with us tonight and has requested that we table this motion so that he can be a part of the discussion, because I think he has information or questions that he wants to ensure are being entered. So I'd like to make a motion to table. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is tabled. Thank you. Next up is the authorization to advertise a bit of installation for equipment improvements and related construction for the traffic signal at Norris Town Road and Tennis Avenue. I would turn it over to our traffic engineer.
Okay, I believe you received a brief memo on this. The Township received a PennDOT Green Light Go grant back in the fall of 2022 for traffic signal improvements at Norris Town and Tennis Avenue, which include the installation of a new controller with battery backup, installation of emergency preemption for the intersection, the addition of countdown pedestrian signals, ADA compliant pedestrian push buttons for the pedestrian signals, and new traffic signal heads at the intersection. The Township received a grant in an amount a little less than $160,000, and there was a 20% match to that. We've completed the design and permitting process with PennDOT within the last month, and we are looking for authorization from the Board to advertise for... and we are looking for authorization from the board to advertise for construction bids. And we would, if authorized this evening, we would anticipate coming back to you at your June twenty-seventh meeting with a bid recommendation.
Any questions from the board? I just have one question. We're just going to advertise. So you're just projecting the anticipated cost and the anticipated match?
Correct.
With the hope that inflation doesn't affect us?
Correct. We, we included a contingency in the original estimate that we did, and hopefully, yeah, the bids come in close to what we estimated.
Okay. Are there any questions from many, the public or anyone online? Okay, seeing none, this is authorization to advertise the bid for the installation of the equipment improvements and related construction for the traffic signal. Norris Town Road and Tennis Avenue. I'd like to make a motion. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much. You're staying with us?
Yeah.
Next up is the authorization for James D. Morrissey Incorporated to utilize a defined portion of the township property located at nine oh one Sumney Town Pike, which is our former Texaco Station, as a staging area for the Spring House Intersection Improvement for the duration of the project. I know that we had some questions and we've got a good bit of answers. And I think it's not included in the packet, and I don't know if the visual is available, but it was shared with us, the specific area where the staging would take place and the limited scope. I guess the only question that I have would be to our solicitor, is there any indemnification that we need to do?
There was an indemnification in the existing construction contract, and what I proposed is to do an amendment to the construction contract covering this particular issue and making sure that the provisions of the existing contract apply to this issue as well.
May respond to your proposal?
Uh, it hasn't been formally made yet.
So we have to authorize you to make that? Okay. So we have before the recommended action is to authorize them to utilize that portion is the recommended action from our staff. But in addition, we have the recommendation from our solicitor to make an addendum. Do we need to amend the agenda in any capacity to make that amendment or to authorize you to make that amendment?
No, that'll go along with the authorization.
Okay.
Just conditioned on their agreement.
Right.
Extending them.
And this is just to ensure everyone's safety?
Safety and protect the township against potential liability and make sure the property is restored to its natural state post-construction.
Thank you. And I think, thank you, Jamie, for putting up the map so we can see the area that we're talking about. Are there any additional questions from the board? Any questions from anybody in the public or anyone online? So the recommendation would be to authorize James D. Morrissey Incorporated to utilize the portion of nine oh one Sumney Town Pike shown in the aerial photo, included in the May ninth public meeting pack as a staging area for the Spring House Intersection Improvement Project through November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, and to authorize our solicitor to make an amendment to the contract to include that portion of the property as in the indemnity indemnification clause. It's already in the existing contract. That was really long. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil. Next up, we have the approval of the Lever Gwinnett Township Cafeteria Plan, and I think we, that was included in our manager's report. And we were asked to table this item by the attorney related to, I'm going to turn it over to our manager because I don't want to say it wrong.
So this afternoon I got an email from the, the tax attorney who's been advising us on the tax. And so he had one other issue that he thinks should be cleaned up in the cafeteria plan. So I ask that you, if you table this, I think it'll be finalized for, and ready for you for the next meeting.
So I can make a motion to table. Second, all those in favor? Oh, wait, are there, are there comments from the board?
I have a question, but it, it can wait till after we take the vote.
So we have a, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
So Mimi, my question about this is, as I read this, most of the verbiage relates to employees that are paid a salary. Is there any need to insert in this something to the effect that supervisors who are not employees are entitled to these things? And I'm not sure of the certain wording that would be required, but I think there needs to be something to point out that supervisors are not paid a salary, but we are entitled to the insurance as part of the benefit of being on the board.
I, I'll confirm that and I, but I believe it, it does apply, but I'll see if there's any other additional verbiage. Because it's not about whether you're eligible for the health insurance. It's whether you're, have the option of electing some of these optional benefits, which is the point of the cafeteria plan. That's why it's distinct from our health insurance plans, but especially now, I'll be talking to the attorney. I'll double check that.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up, we have the approval of the Intergovernmental Agreement with North Wales Borough and Upper Gwinnett Township to create a joint Board of Appeals for the Uniform Construction Code. And included in our board packet was the memorandum kind of outlining the history. Earlier in the year, we authorized Lever Gwinnett to take the necessary steps to participate in this Joint Board of Code Appeals that existed between Upper Gwinnett and, and North Wales. So this document is us to formalize and to potentially approve that intergovernmental agreement. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public or anyone online? I don't know if they can see the agreement, but the intergovernment corporate, the undergovernment operation agreement to create the Board of Appeals, I'm not going to read the entirety of that agreement, make a motion to approve our participation in that agreement with North Wales Borough and Upper Gwinnett Township. Is all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Kathleen. Next up is a general lease. One second, let me just bring it up. I'd like to make a motion for us to ratify the general lease. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is the approval of the minutes over April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Has everyone gotten a chance on the board to look at the minutes?
Yes.
Are there any questions, concerns?
No.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for the April, Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is Supervisor Liaison Reports. I guess I'll give a little bit of background. Mimi, do you want to give a little bit of background about what will change and what to expect in the future? Or do you want me to? I'm sorry, you were drinking your beer.
I can do that. My mouth's not dry anymore. I can do that. So we, we've kind of been working on, on different things on the agenda to make sure that there's good information for the public and for all the supervisors to, to know what's going on in the different aspects of the township when you aren't directly involved without adding undue time to the meetings. So the Supervisor Liaison Reports were an opportunity for the supervisors to be updating each other on the public meeting discussions, especially because it can take more than a month or so for the minutes to be approved by each of those volunteer boards. They get approved at the subsequent, subsequent meetings, so they're not put on the website until after they're approved. So what we're going to do is have, as, as the staffer taking minutes, pull out some highlights as they're doing it that we, and put it on a form that we've developed. And we will make sure all the supervisor liaisons have that, but we'll also be including that in your packet. So they're not minutes. They're not intended to take the place of minutes, but it's to hit the high points that are important for, for anybody who wants to be following what those, the volunteer commissions are doing or for the other supervisors to be able to have that information handy and in a more timely manner.
Ew. So in the vein that we're going to be moving towards that, is there any highlights from the Supervisor Liaisons to any of the volunteer commissions? And I believe the EAC meets tomorrow. The Historic Committee meets on Thursday, Thursday, the eighteenth. Park and Rec, Park and Rec meets next week. Fall Fest meets the end of the month. Is there any, the Human Relations Commission met last Thursday. Is there any highlights from that meeting that you wanted to share?
Not any sort of recommendations, but we did have a presentation from Bernadine. She heads up the Coalition for Justin. And she gave us a presentation of her educational programs that she's doing in Norris Town School District and that she would like to propose to visit in the school district. So the, the Human Relations Commission wanted to review the program before deciding whether they would, you know, make a recommendation that, that to the school district instead of this program. I didn't get to see it, but Jimmy Chong, one of our Human Relations Commission members, was teacher last night. And that was his presentation with India. He reported on that. Watch that up on the college. Jimmy Chong's one of our Human Relations.
Thank you. I skipped you guys, but staff, no, I didn't. Staff updates.
Thank you. Yeah, we wanted to provide the board with an update. A few weeks ago, the board had asked us to inquire with PennDOT about making some low-cost safety improvements along Gypsy Hill Road and the area of the S-curves near Huntsey Drive. PennDOT has responded very quickly and they have sent a plan to the township with some signing and pavement marking improvements that they plan to make, which include enhancing some of the curb warning signs at each of the ninety-degree turns and what I'll call the S-curve area. And the other item of note, which there was a lot of questions about, was should there be some signing enhancements for the one-lane bridge? And they're going to make some improvements there by adding some signs from each direction and say yield to oncoming traffic. And they're also going to add some yield pavement markings as well to help grab, grab people's attention before they cross the bridge. So they have a plan that they plan to implement probably late summer at the earliest, more than likely this fall. They'll get to it. It's sort of a region-wide contract that they have with the contractor and when they're working in different areas, they get off to do these smaller projects. So we'll, we'll stay in touch with PennDOT on scale, update if anything changes.
Are they going to fill in the ditches on the side of the road?
No. The drainage swells, you mean?
But the, the edge of the road is eroded. If somebody's wheel falls off the edge of the pavement, that's going to lead to an accident.
Yeah, there's no, no pavement work associated with this. This is strictly signing and pavement marking improvements.
Can you go back and ask them about it?
We can inquire about if they have plans to resurface the road soon or have a timeline for that, but their low-cost safety improvements program doesn't get into pavement construction work. It only pertains to signing and pavement marking type improvements.
Is there anything we can do as a township until PennDOT decides to do something?
Well, like I said, we'll inquire with them to see where it is on their maintenance program. It's a PennDOT road. Unfortunately, the township, you know, can't go out and do any improvements itself. But, you know, we can certainly let them know it's a concern and, and find out, you know, where it is on their program.
Isn't it, is it not private property? The, the swells or is it considered part of the right-of-way, the swells?
I would assume the drainage swells are within the right-of-way. I, I think, Tessa, you're referring to like the edge of pavement. Correct.
So there. Now, on the S, yeah, the, the soil along the road has eroded and it needs stone or something there. I, I think it's unacceptable to just say, well, it's PennDOT's problem. So I think we need to push to have somebody go out and look at it. Maybe I'm wrong, but it seems, you know, kind of unsafe. I think we've had inquiries from residents also about that.
Okay, we'll check in.
So the residents have changed during this issue for attention, they fail laws, I forget what it is.
Yeah, I spoke to them before we heard from PennDOT. I'll follow back up with them and give them an update.
Yeah, I mean, that's great news.
Chad, while I can ask you a question while we're talking. There was brought up, I can't remember what meeting it was at, one of the township meetings, but the, the islands on the road turning from two oh two into Plymouth or the, the street part is very narrow there. Is, can, can somebody ask PennDOT if that's going to be remedied?
Yeah, Mimi brought this to my attention the other day, and we're certainly going to look into that with.
EMS, that's right.
Yeah, we're going to certainly look into that with PennDOT and raise the concerns and see if there's any kind of adjustments that can be made to address those concerns.
If, if they put those islands as a temporary measure while the construction is going on, that's okay. But if that's their permanent plan, it is really too narrow.
Yeah, the, the, the purpose of the islands, there's a restriction on making lefts out of Plymouth Road, and that was the purpose of putting the islands there. But if it's going to create issues in terms of being too restrictive for the other movements, then, you know, we'll ask PennDOT to take a look at that.
I guess the other alternative could be to make them less tall.
Yeah, the one island has mountable curb, the other one has vertical curbs. So one of the questions I'm going to ask when I, when I get in touch with them is, you know, why they, why they chose to use the vertical curb on the, on the one island.
Okay, thank you, Chad.
That concludes your update. All the safe? Everyone? Everyone's good?
True. I see. The chief is online. Do you have anything to add, Paul?
I would add, thank you, Mimi. I was thinking about it. Next Saturday, May, is, is next Saturday, May twentieth? We're seeing the signs for the Touch a Truck event that our CRU unit is having. So you'll, you'll see the signs on Bethlehem Pike at a couple of locations. It's going to be held at the old Seaman's parking lot. So it's going to be a wonderful affair. We have many contractors, businesses involved. It's going to be a great day for kids to come out and touch a truck. And emergency services will all be there. We have some food trucks coming. I'm just hoping for nice weather, and if we get that, that'll be a bonus. So that's Saturday, May twentieth, and I don't believe we have a meeting before that date. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there going to be a helicopter?
There, I'm hearing rumors that a helicopter.
I'm excited.
Yeah, I think we'll be touching helicopters, but rumor is that probably a medevac helicopter will be coming. And I also want to note that the first hour of the event is going to be a little different in that it's going to be, how do I say, like silent, like we're not going to blow air horns, we're not going to blow sirens, we don't want to scare kids. You know, these trucks are loud, air horns are very loud. So the first hour of the event is prepped to be for silent touching and, you know what I'm saying?
So it's accessible for, for all needs, and if there's any sensory needs, the first hour is the best hour to come for you.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that. That's the word I was searching for.
Okay, that's awesome, though, and we appreciate you accommodating everybody in the community and being inclusive. So I'm excited.
Yep, Officer Henry Towney's done a great job. I mean, he's been, he's really been wrapped up in it, and it, it's going to be a great event. It really is. I'm looking forward to it.
Sounds awesome. Thank you for that update.
Yep. Yep.
Supervisor comments. Oh, go ahead, Mimi.
Just one other thing I forgot to mention, that tomorrow morning, the Montgomery County Chamber is having, twice a year, they have meetings for their members where township managers are invited to give updates. So I'm going tomorrow for Lower Gwinnett to also share news and events.
Thank you. Is there still the opportunity for businesses interested in, in interacting with our chamber to, to reach out?
There definitely is, and I'm, I'll see the chamber, I'm going to tractor tomorrow. I'm going to see what's going on, what's the latest.
Awesome, awesome, awesome. Okay. Maybe let the people know that are coming tomorrow, or telling them we're going to disrupt their whole intersection, but they can come and be a part of the chamber, though.
While we have your attention.
Thank you. Supervisor updates. Tessie?
I don't have any comments. Kathleen?
Yeah, I just want to say regarding the pride flag ceremony, a resolution before us this year, as we did last year, so I won't ask comment on the rationale or presumptions in that resolution. The purposes, the effectiveness, the suitability for raising the flag, you can check. So we're really just dealing tonight with the display of the flag. And the second-class township code does indeed give us the authority to raise a flag. We may raise a flag. And flags that we may raise according to the second-class township code is the United States flag, the flag of our municipality, and the official POW MIA flag. And that is the list of flags upon which the legislature has deemed upon second-class township to fly, display on buildings or township property. Though it is my assertion that we do not have the authority to fly any other flag than those flags that are designated in the second-class township code. I would like to hear my fellow supervisors' comments on that. It's in the code. You can pull it up if you need to read it, but the particular section delineates those four flags. If it were the intent of the legislature to have us raise a pride flag or an Asian flag or an Israel flag, there would have been language to the effect of, or any other flag that a majority of the board so deems appropriate or wishes to fight. And that language is not there. So it is my interpretation, and I think it's pretty clear, it's pretty basic language, that we just really don't have the authority to raise any other flag.
Better take that tree city flag down and that up?
Your point?
Neil, we, I mean, we discussed this last time.
You want me to discuss it again?
I think, I think I would like you to just kind of go over again the, the reasoning why we have the authority to raise a flag.
When I practice statutory interpretation, I look at the precise words of the statute. And there's a fundamental difference between the legislature saying shall or shall not and may. And I think where the legislature wants to prohibit an act, they say shall not, or the act shall be prohibited, or something to that effect. This is very permissive language. It says may in the section, which is fundamentally different. The other thing that I would say is, while that section refers to flags, I understand that this is not a flag, it's actually a banner. So that's where I come down with the issue.
And just to clarify, I'm trying to recollect from a year ago, we passed a resolution identifying June as Pride Month. In your opinion, do we have to do that annually?
If you're going to recognize a particular month, it would be appropriate to do a resolution. It doesn't necessarily prohibit what you're doing, but it's good practice to do that.
So what's the difference between a banner and a flag? And if we're being this precise in our legalities, why are we calling it a pride flag raising? And, you know, it's not a prohibition here, it is a permission limited to those categories in the statute.
Yeah, so in my mind, this is no different than the sign discussion that we've had recently about the township being able to put certain signs on our own property that we want to let the community know about an event going on, or in this case, a recognition of a group of, of people who may have been discriminated against. So I, I don't think it's any different than, in terms of us, you know, as a board voting for this, then it, it doesn't have to be a flag or a banner, it could be a sign, it could be any other type of object, which relays our support of certain individuals or class of individuals. You know, it could be anything. So I, I don't really see that, that we're doing something that's not permitted, put it that way.
Okay, well, I disagree with you. It is a flag. It's being raised in a flag poll. We are charged as elected officials, and we took an oath to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth. And I'll, I'll read you the section, it's section 1510. The second-class township code, display of flags. The Board of Supervisors may display the flag of the United States or the Commonwealth, the official POW MIA flag, or the flag of any country or municipal corporation on any public building or grounds of the township. Not about the flag, it's about acting within the rule of law and within our authority. And in my opinion, I think June 1st is kind of a public display of us usurping our authority. And I'd like to, or I'm, I'm on record that I don't think, it's not in our authority. So I would like to ask my fellow supervisors, giving the plain language of this statute, if they feel that it is. You know, we have a majority, and we'll put up the flag.
So I think that we discussed this at length for an extreme amount of time, I think, last year. And then, and it was in relation to a multitude of things last year. And I think this situation is, is clearly for discussing specifically the flag. And I think our solicitor kind of hit the nail on the head, where we're, like, language is important. The meaning behind the words is important. And the way that statutes, as well as ordinances, are written is important. I'm one of the few people in the room who's not a lawyer. However, I do understand how important each word is and the implications. So when someone says you shall not, you are restricted or prohibited. Very clear. If they say you shall, they're instructing you to. If you're, if they say may, they're giving you the option.
Permission.
Yes, but it's also the option, because you don't have to. You're not compelled to, you're not instructed to. So, you know, just with the background of writing policy and, and a background of writing legislation, I understand that there was nothing in that statute that indicated we are prohibited from. It doesn't say shall not. It does not say you are prohibited from doing this. And with that instruction and the understanding of the language, again, I am not a lawyer. I know that we have the authority to raise a flag.
Okay, so you do believe we have the authority?
Absolutely.
And so does our solicitor. And I mean, I, I trust Neil and I
Well, I, I disagree with our solicitor. I think as matter restricts statutory construction, the may, the permission is limited to those four flags.
So, I mean, if you would like us, if you would like us to consider a vote right now, I have no issue with amending our
Well, we don't need a vote, but I appreciate my fellow supervisors' views on whether you think you are acting in
Without question, yeah. Without question, my, my view and stance on this has not changed from last year or the year prior.
Are you suggesting also that we need to take a vote every year on this?
No, we don't have to, because the statute says we may do it. It doesn't need to be done through a resolution or vote. We may do it, as long as it's those four flags. Is my interpretation of the statute.
How come you didn't raise a concern with the tree city flag?
I didn't really know there was a tree city flag. Where's the tree city?
It's up right now, at Veterans Park.
No. Yeah, when we got me the tree city.
Do you think you would have raised this concern if it were about the tree city flag?
Be consistent, yeah.
There's other ways to designate us being a tree city.
Okay. So thank, is that conclude your comments? I don't want to, okay, thank you. Janine?
Can I, just before we leave, there's a point of clarification. I thought I heard, do you want a resolution for Pride Month then on the next?
I do. I mean, I don't know if I need to take a vote, but, I mean, we can.
For the, for the next meeting. I just wanted to, I kind of only heard
Yeah, based upon Neil's interpretation, I believed that the resolution went in perpetuity until it was dropped.
Yeah, it was limited to
Was it limited to one year? Okay.
So you might want to change the line.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm asking, do you want me to do that now, or can I do it in my comments? Doesn't matter, does it? We need to take So to instruct Neil to craft it and then just to change it? Okay, thank you. Janine?
Yes. Well, Chief stole my thunder about the touch truck. I was going to remind everybody about that event. That should be a lot of fun for the kids and the whole family. I also want to, I know we talked about it in the beginning of the meeting, but formally invite everybody to come to the pride flag raising event. I'm very proud that we, as a township, are doing this. I think raising the pride flag is a symbol to kids, adults of the LGBTQ community, that we are inclusive. You know, we see you, we hear you, you are welcome. We want you to feel safe and seen. And so I'm, you know, I'm honored that we're able to do that. This ceremony, I think, will be, you know, unique to last year, because we're going to hear from students of, in our community. You know, last year was sort of about, we had a lot of political, both speaking and, you know, the governor, former general, Mr. Josh Barrow, and, you know, it was great, because it was the first time we ever did it. But this year, you know, we really wanted it to be about the students and how doing something like this, you know, impacts them, is meaningful to them, and why it's very important to them to see this in their community. So our first LGBTQ official, Kathy Dono, is spearheading, helping us put this event together. And I think it's just going to be really wonderful to see community leaders, we've got faith leaders coming, and it's really the focus that'll be at 6:00 P.M.
6:00 P.M.
On Jesus.
Veterans Park.
That's the end of my comments. Cap, do you want to say something? Did I miss something?
Did she say something?
I did. I said, thank you very much for saying that, Supervisor Martin.
Come on, that's cool. We're grateful.
Okay. All right. So Janine stole my thunder. I think I, I just wanted to highlight the idea of the inclusivity and the purpose of making an intentional statement to, to recognize individuals who have always lived in our community, who have always been in our community, and to ensure that they feel welcomed at all times. And I think our first member of the public who commented, I think, articulated why I might have an understanding and appreciation for that. What it was like to live in a community where you were in a, in a numeric, you know, minority, and how it's important to recognize that you are welcomed, that you're included, and to feel that inclusivity. I think the whole purpose and the focus of this year is to hear from the kids and the youth. I think because of the idea that we want to ensure that everyone feels welcome here, regardless of anything. So while not being a member of the LGBTQI community, I feel that it is our duty to ensure that everyone who lives within Lower Gwinnett feels like this is their home, this is their community, they're welcomed, our businesses are welcoming. And having students who are here temporarily at Gwinnett Mercy University be part of that ceremony, as well as high school students and middle school students right here in Wissahackin, being a part of it is important. So it's not going to be hearing from elected officials in any capacity, and it's not going to be a lot of pomp and circumstance. It's going to be a few young, young adults or young people telling you why it's important to them, and we're going to raise the flag. So if you have time or energy at 6:00 P.M. on June 1st, we'd appreciate everyone coming out to support not only us, but more importantly, the kids and the youth in our community. Because I think feeling accepted and feeling seen and feeling welcome is important for everyone, whether you're an adult or a child. With that, I also want to say, or want to give a shout out to our police chief for, unbeknownst to me, being inclusive in our touch-a-truck ceremony and the, and the community response unit. It's really important, being the sibling of an individual with an intellectual disability, to ensure that everyone feels welcome. So differently-abled people can participate in all of our activities. It's important to me, and I think it's important to members of our community, to know that we are purposely being inclusive and ensuring that everybody has representation and, and knows that we are purposely here for them. With that, I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.